Council meeting dated zero nine zero nine nineteen eighty-five. This the uh, council meeting will go as such. We'll give five minutes to the floor to each council member to present their legislation. If they do not have legislation, they could use that five minutes to give us an idea of what legislation they're working on and what they're working towards. Um, after each individual gets their five minutes, including myself, to present the legislation. We will then open the floor up to anyone that has met the requirements of the council via the constitution, that being thirty signatures to present legislation. We'll open the floor for five minutes and uh, they'll explain their, their motion. Um, and at the end, we will, we will go around the council and see if we have enough information to vote on it. If we do not have, feel like we have enough information to vote on it, we will push the vote off till next week and give us time to deliberate over such matters. So with that, I open the floor to council member Chase. Do you want to present uh, anything to the council? Chase?
Oh, sorry, I thought that you said Falco. Um.
Uh, no.
Uh, hold on, say that. Stop poking me. Okay, um, yeah, so basically there, if not everyone's aware, there's a new law about the seizure of vehicles and vehicle points. Uh, it was just recently added to the public library, if anyone uh, would take a look at that. Um, I will be proposing a bill to uh, get rid of that. Um, that's what I'm focusing on currently. Uh, currently don't have enough signatures for it, uh, still getting, working on the bill. But uh, yeah, just keep your eyes out for that.
Um, as a council member, you do not require, you're not required to meet that requirement, you can just present those bills to us.
Oh shit, okay. Uh, that's all I have for now. Oh, actually also I got one more thing. Uh, if anyone has any problems with anyone inside of the Los Angeles Police Department or anything inside of Los Angeles Police Department. Uh, go ahead, bring it to myself. Um, I could help you with that, I could handle it for you. Um, you know, I obviously work one with the police department and um, and I'm here, I can bring it up with the government, so you know, there's a lot of things I could do with that. But uh, yeah, that's, that's all I got tonight.
The officer rests his uh, rests his time. Uh, Mr. Caputo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. The first bill I'd like to introduce uh, in this first session is the quote-unquote, the San Andreas Sensible Speed Act. Um, since the establishment of speed limits for the state of San Andreas have been contentious amongst its citizens. Locals brazenly disregard these limits and the disparity in speeds leads to instances of damage and motor vehicle accidents. The current text under Public Law zero zero one states that highway speeds shall be limited to fifty-five miles per hour. The speeds inside the city are limited to thirty-five miles per hour and the speeds in Blaine County are forty-five miles per hour. This bill would raise those by approximately twenty percent across the board. The highway speeds will be increased to seventy-five miles per hour. The city speeds will be forty-five and Blaine County shall be raised to fifty-five miles per hour.
And Mr. Caputo, do you?
That's essentially it.
Okay, do you yield your rest from time?
I do.
Alright. The floor is open for council member Billy Falco.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Billy Falco here, your new councilman. I am, I have three, three bills to propose at the moment. One. Actually, I, I had four, but uh, Mr. Caputo took me, took my idea with the uh, the speed limit, so that's a great, that's a great, that's a great thing, cause great minds think alike. So, first of all. I'd like to propose uh, Constitutional Amendment Act. That any changes to the constitution will requir uh, ratification by city council and the mayor. Um, before they, they can be added to the, to the constitution. Uh, you know, I further propose that most, that new amendments to the constitution should, should, that it should be up a higher bar to pass constitutional amendments. And that most regulations and laws should be passed just as standard regulations and laws, not as constitutional amendments. Uh, and the reason for that is because. The constitution is meant to just be kind of a, the guidelines by which the rest of the government runs. And, and like the perfect example is the most recent change, um, that uh, Mr. McLean is, is, is um, is looking to repeal. It's like, that definitely should not have been a constitutional amendment. Um, the. Excuse me, I'm trying to remember. Mister, Mister Mayor, can you, can you recall what my third, what my third idea was?
Um. Top of my head, I cannot, I cannot.
A really strong start and it threw me off. Um. I'll, I'll come back to it.
You yield the rest of your time?
Yes.
Alright, floor is open uh, to me. So the proposal, the amendment that I'll be proposing is the Fair Start Fee Reduction Act. Our amendment, with the inception of the Fair Start program, the time is all, all the levels for the nonviolent and violent felonies have been reduced by two-thirds. While this is very helpful for getting people through the process, uh, the monetary cost has not been changed in that, to reductions. So I set forth this amendment in the section of Public Law zero one of expungements.
No fighting in the war room.
Get a fly on her.
Decorum.
Sorry, ma'am.
I'll catch you next time.
The Article One Amendment text in section five of the expungement Fair Start program shall state that following such a period upon the receipt of payment of one thousand dollars for a nonviolent felony and two thousand dollars for a violent felony to the Department of Justice, the citizen shall be eligible to have their past records sealed and removed from permanent record. Such records are still eligible for use of the law enforcement and investigative means. Currently, right now, the intent of this is the constitutional amendment will reduce the cost to citizens to have, to have their records sealed by the courts of Los Santos. While in the Fair Start program, the reduction price will match the percentage that the time reduction required for qualifying for the program set forth in the amendment of the section of Public Law zero one zero two of expungements. Which in fact reduces the times by two-thirds, but does not reduce the fees. So, this, this implementation will be swift and immediate after passage of this bill and the bill then will go to judicial, to the judiciary for judicial review. Um, the effective date of the passage will happen, um, and then on that, any other revisions, just like any other revision currently granted, Mr. Uh, Mr. Falco's bill is presented, then it will meet those requirements, but until then, it'll meet the requirements set forth so far in the constitution. This bill is ready for viewing amongst the council members. I will make this public for the public to view, but that's the intent of my bill that I'll be presenting to the city council today. And with that, I yield my remaining time and open the floor to any citizen that has the required thirty signatures for a bill they'd like to present to the council. If there are no bills, we'll yield that time and we'll deliberate and see if we have enough to vote on any of these. Oh. Alright.
Don't mind me, sorry, not, don't have signatures for nothing, sorry.
Damn.
Just gonna take a picture, pardon me. Nose guy.
Alright, so we'll go around and if we have a motion to vote, we'll vote on it and if not, we'll move forward.
I, 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 uh, Mister Mayor, I, I do wish to, to propose one other legislation.
Alright, the floor is yours.
Uh, the, the constitution currently states that there is cash due liability for, for businesses and I'd like to propose that um, that corporations uh, you act as corporations and, and the corporate bail exists. That way, there's not personal liability if you're, you know, if your, if your company gets sued, for instance.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
Call up the Corporate Bail Act.
Corporate Bail Act? Do you yield your remaining time?
I do.
Alright. So. For the bill pertaining to the strike, strikes on citizens' cars, do we have enough, is that in, actually written out to where we can view it? If not, we could yield it to next week's vote. Mister McLean? Chase?
I'm sorry, sorry, stage raving. Say, say that again.
Yeah, do you have the text of the bill to present to the council? If not, we can yield it to next week's vote.
Uh, no, not at this time. Yeah, I'm still writing it.
Alright. You will place the uh, bill uh, where we can view it and deliver it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll put it in our um, filing cabinet.
Sounds good. Mister Caputo. Do you have the text to present to the council for vote?
I do, in fact, yes.
You do?
Uh, one moment, yeah, maybe we gotta check off.
Alright, council members, do we feel that we have enough information to vote on this? The San Andreas Sensible Speed Act.
Hold on, I'm still reading. Not, not a very fast reader, Chase, okay?
No, it's okay.
Oh, it's got words and numbers and all sorts of like.
Okay, yeah, I'm done reading.
I guess my only question to the mayor beforehand, do we have uh, enough members here for a consensus?
I do believe so.
Yeah, it looks good to me.
Let's see if we have any votes for the.
We have, we have majority currently, three out of the uh.
Alright.
Alright, so I'm gonna put this motion to uh, this act under vote. Um, show of hands. Um, those who vote nay, or gay, raise their hand.
I am trying to, but I don't see the.
Alright, we have a unanimous, at the record show, we have a unanimous vote on the San Andreas Sensible Speed Act. Moving forward. Mister Falco? Do you want to move your votes, your bills to be voted on the next session?
Uh, I do not have the text at the moment, so yes.
Alright, move to vote on this next week. Um, I presented my bill in the library for viewing, does the council members feel they have enough information to vote on this bill? Alright, so show of hands for the Fair Start Fee Reduction Amendment to the constitution?
Oh, uh, uh, Mister Mayor, I just need a minute to reread it.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I need to reread this. Okay, yeah, I'm good.
I may ask some questions for clarification here.
Yes.
So currently the expungement program has two levels, there's sort of the first chance and then the second chance should their first chance fail. Would this reduction include just the first, both, or just the second?
This will only apply to the Fair Start program, which is the first. It will not apply to the second. Yes.
Alright. Yeah, I'm coming.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Alright, the show of hands, all those voting yea, raise your hand for the vote of the Fair Start Fee Reduction Amendment to the constitution. Alright. At the record show, the Fair Start Fee Reduction Amendment has passed and will be passed to judiciary. I now open the floor to any other statements or questions the council members have. Moving forward for the close session.
Um, if we could maybe open a moment or two, um, actually, Mister Falco, do you want to proceed first, or?
No, I was gonna say, I was gonna, I wanted to open the floor to some of the citizens.
Alright. Uh, if I may proceed first, if we may have a moment to discuss uh, the particulars of Mister McLean's bill for the, the vehicle seizures.
Yes.
Um, so my understanding is currently in the constitution, there is a provision for vehicles involved in uh, the commission of a crime that a civil forfeiture may take place. Now, my understanding of the seizure um, act that was added recently to the constitution is that it facilitates this process in a manner that doesn't require as much involvement from the suspects, is usually involving a civil forfeiture with a vehicle uh, can be problematic because it does require their involvement um, in a, in a, in a few different ways as title transfers need to be done through PDM, et cetera. So i- with that in mind, um. In, in some ways, it is almost a lesser of two evils, I believe, um, as opposed to the Attorney General's Office filing civil forfeitures on vehicles accused of crimes.
Well, see Caputo here, the reason I brought this forward was because I really didn't see a problem with it before um, this uh, the amendment to the constitution has been added. Um, I think it was just fine the old way we had it. I don't understand the whole point system and why it's needed. Um. At the end of the day, it's just gonna get criminals more upset, uh, people, the public more upset, um, it's gonna cause more danger to the public than really helping.
Understandable, prob- perhaps we, we can arrange some time to speak with the chief justice about this one, eh?
Mm-hmm, agreeable.
Mm-hmm.
Get a little more clarity on uh, what his intentions are behind it.
I concur with that. Maybe we could set up a meeting where the judiciary and all the council members are present for questions?
A little irregular, but I believe Officer Burton, I may have a, a question or something to uh.
Yeah, Burton, go ahead, come up to the stand.
As an officer of the LSPD, I believe he'd have some insight.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I was just hoping maybe I could give some insight from uh, from our side of things. Uh, with the state of uh, vehicular travel as it is right now, um. Uh, frequent offenders are uh, they're, they're just free to do whatever, whatever they want, as long as they have a vehicle that can, you know, go, go faster than X miles per hour. Um, they pretty much just uh, can, you know, wreak havoc and reign free. So, having this in place uh, is some way to counter that. Um, I ain't, you know, too fond of selling back the vehicle to the offender, but uh, at the very least, getting the vehicle off the street. Um, especially knowing how much these upgrades cost, it's at least a deterrent for these people to, to maybe, you know, rethink their actions and, and try and uh, you know, maybe not uh, commit crimes or at least, the very least, not uh, not be so frequent about it. I mean, a- as far as safety and, and, and concern for the citizens of Los Santos, uh, the speed at which these vehicles are going, i- it's, it's like you know, sending a rocket ship straight through a city. Um, it ain't safe at all for anyone, to be honest, not even the driver.
Understandable, Burton, I mean, I, I know, I know exactly what you're talking about, um, but my thought process behind it all is why don't, instead of having to pay for their vehicle back, um, what's the difference between that and then just holding it longer for seizure? Uh, why doesn't the LSPD just make amends to their SOPs, um, and have them hold vehicles for longer? So vehicles that are frequent flyers per se, um, they're just held in seizure for lo- a longer period of time. So, say someone, you know, hits a bank and we, and the LSPD loses sight of them. Uh, they, they were able to get a plate and everything, they've marked that down on the vehicle's notes inside of their uh, on their paper on the MDT. Now, the next time you see that vehicle, you keep in mind that it has been used and something like this, it's gotten away from officers in the past. And uh, from there, uh, once the LSPD does catch these criminals, then they will go ahead and seize the uh, vehicle for uh, let's say a period of seven days to fourteen days.
I can give, I can give an example as to how these kind of deterrents work. Um, uh, just recently, I had uh, an individual whose vehicle was uh, constantly being used in crimes. Um, they were able to uh, evade our detection uh, due to not having a license plate on the vehicle. Individual was warned several times to uh, to put a license plate, uh, remove the illegal modification. Uh, he got arrested, uh, and his vehicle was seized. And my, what I told him was in order to get his vehicle unseized, I would escort him to Benny's, get that illegal modification removed. And he was just real quick to comply with everything because that's his baby. Uh, people care about their, their cars, they care about their possessions and uh, if their car is under threat of being removed from their person and possibly even sold back to, I mean stripped for parts and then given back to Benny's, Hayes, whichever it is, you know, to kind of bolster the economy a little bit. People gonna think twice about what they doing with their vehicles because, you know, they care about them and they're, they're spending lots of money on them. Um, I, I just think uh, be, being able to seize the property indefinitely and permanently, uh, especially with the, the idea of being able to strip it and sell, sell the parts back to um, the manufacturers and the, the businesses that are providing these upgrades. I think it's a good thing for the economy, I think it's a good deterrent criminals that uh, are, are frequent offenders. And uh, I just think it's a good thing all in all. Um, I, I, that's just my insight on how that deterrent, it literally just works.
Yeah, which is completely understandable, but if you use that same thought process with the fact that these criminals will not be seeing their cars for anywhere from a week to two weeks, i- it's basically the exact same thing. It's basically the same thing of saying, you know, selling it back and stripping parts, they're, they will still be without a vehicle. They will still be wanting their quote-unquote, baby back, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Right, but they know that at some point, they gonna get, get it back for free.
Which is understandable, but it's the same thing, it will be away for a long period of time.
Okay, I, I, I wasn't trying to turn this into a debate, I just wanna give some insight.
Me either, yeah, yeah, me either, and I, I appreciate the insight.
Yeah, this council appreciates your insight, Officer Burton, as well, to summarize, you, you are in favor of the current, the current statute, yes?
One hundred percent. I, I don't think uh, I don't, I'm not too fond of the idea of selling back the vehicle to the owner at half the market price. Cause I think that's a bit of a cop-out and it's easy for people to get their vehicles back, um, but uh, I'm all in favor for seizure of property. I mean, i- it could even go beyond vehicles and, you know, start, eh, you don't, you don't, you can't prove how you make your money, then, you know, you're gonna lose your house.
How do you feel about, how do you feel about auctions?
I'm all for that. Uh, I'm all for that, I'm back, I'm, I'm all for giving back to the, to the community and uh, giving back to the economy, uh, of the city as a whole. Um, I'm all for, you know, I mean, say somebody uh, ain't making, you know, say somebody washing windows for a living. Uh, or, you know, let's say the lowest, lowest paid uh, position in the city, a police officer wants to buy a, a nice car. Uh, maybe even with some upgrades in it, so they can go up to the racetrack and have a little fun. You know, being able to purchase that at an auction at a, a discounted price, I'm all for that. You know, let's give back to the folk who can't really afford, um, people who uh, eh, you know, they ain't the loggers of the city, you know, they ain't the criminals that are making, you know, thousands of dollars in store robberies every day. Give back to them a little bit, let them buy a nice car.
The reason why I ask that, officer, is currently right now in the Business Act of nineteen eighty-five, there is a clause that allows the bureau to seize and then sell off at auction any seized property that is found to be of criminal descent, so that's why I asked you.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea, Mister Mayor.
I appreciate your opinion. I'm not speaking for every councilman, but can't speak for anyone but myself, but thank you for your uh, input.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Officer.
Thank you, Burton.
Alright, do we want to continue to have at least some open floor? If not, we have one more housekeeping item to discuss.
Uh, can I just make a statement to anyone who wasn't here earlier?
Yes, for sure.
Okay, um, I'm not sure if anyone else has uh, recently walked in or not, but I just wanna restate this. Uh, if anyone needs someone to talk to inside of the Los Angeles Police Department, you know, hopefully get uh, some things changed, uh, we could talk. Uh, I don't mind, uh, my PO, uh, my PO number is Charlie November seven, seven, niner. Uh, I will gladly take any input, uh, anything like that to uh, help perform the department, uh, help the city have a better, uh, look on them. Alright, that's all I had.
Alright, so the house cleaning is in the City Council Regulation, or Regulation Act of nineteen eighty-five, section, section five, paragraph fi- paragraph B states that we have council members, any council members, um, shall feel to comply with the subsequent section A of two consecutive meetings. Um, being present, they shall be removed from their seats in the council with notice of their removal to the council provided to them. And to their removal of the council announced at the following meeting of the, of the next council meeting, basically, paraphrasing a little bit here. We have two council member seats that have been uh, for lack of better term, abandoned, so I would like to give public notice that those two seats are open. And that by the constitution, during our next session, we announce that they are in fact open. And that opens up the clause of um, filling that seat, those seats with uh, members that can be uh, picked through the constitution. Which includes um, the last uh, elections, which I believe all council members from the last elections are either sitting or have taken a plane to um, to another city, so they will not be returning, which leaves the floor open to allow citizens at the next council meeting to throw their names in the hat and basically into the, into the race and the council members will vote on those two open seats. So I wanted to give public notice, um, as per the constitution of those two seats being open. Does the council members concur with the findings, with that, et cetera?
I concur.
I, I can care.
Yup.
Alright, so let the public know, those two seats will be open for the next council meeting. If anyone wants to put their name in the hat for those remaining seats, um, they can put theirselves, their names forward and the council will vote on them. Do we have any more issues for the council?
I would like to open up the floor.
Uh, I was gonna just say that, thank you very much.
One really quick one here, this is by more matter of formality, I, I did speak to uh, Mayor Reeves previously about this as part of the makeup of the city council, um, one position that is more ceremonial, but also for the benefit of all and our safety is a sergeant-at-arms. This individual would be handling decorum and keeping order and making sure everybody's behaving. And I nominate um, Mister Briggs Anoli for the position of sergeant-at-arms.
Does anyone second that motion?
I second that motion.
Next second.
Motion's passed. Congratulations. Sergeant-at-arms. Our master.
Thank you, sir, sirs. That's all I got, Mister Falco, he's chomping at the bit, he is.
Yeah, please, alright, if anybody, any citizens would like to speak, uh, please uh, approach podium.
Come on, everyone, don't jump at once.
Hmm.
Oh, we gotta take her.
Alright, floor is yours, sir. State your name for the record.
My name is.
Hey, speak up, speak up.
Oh, please speak up.
Speak up.
Yeah, I gotta use your big one.
Okay, uh, my name is Ashley Hughes. Uh, I just think that like, um. Okay, uh, my name is Ashley Hughes, uh, I just think that like, um, loitering shouldn't be a crime because, you know, pigs just use it as a way to like fuck over people, they don't have any actual dirt on, so like, I I know it's not like a big crime, but like, you know, just, I don't, I don't like it.
Can you point to, uh, can you tell us, uh, where in the criminal code that that loitering is is a crime?
Uh, uh.
I asked, I asked that to anybody yet.
So loitering is an infraction with a one hundred and fifty dollar fine, uh, defined as no person shall delay or linger without lawful purpose on private property or in a limited public forum. Now, it goes on to further define it, an individual shall be granted opportunity to vacate the premises prior to the issue of some citation. So there is a chance where an officer will give you a lawful order to vacate the premises, at which point if you deny that, then well, you you're kind of loiter.
What was your name again, sir?
Uh, Ashley Hughes.
Mister Hughes, I definitely appreciate you coming forth, it takes a little bit of gum for me to come here and and state your, uh, reasoning. The only thing I would ask is if you use decorum, and and when you call a, the officer, call him a police officer or officers, and uh, be refrained from, uh, vulgar language while the city council is in session. But I do appreciate you coming forth and expressing your points of view grievances.
Yeah, alright, cool, man.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else?
Uh, Max, I'd I'd like to call you up to to speak.
Me?
This isn't courtroom, he's not a witness.
Well, I, I.
Every right not to.
I am going Socratic method on him. I am gonna, I'm calling Max up, he's gonna, he's gonna say something.
What am I gonna say?
I don't know.
This is completely voluntary, you were not, you were not forced to come here.
Um.
Yeah, tell us a joke.
Grab all the jokes, all the jokes that flew to me, I can, I should not say. Alright, um, not, not.
Standing right in front of me.
Who?
Oh, me?
Oh, there, there we go, I made a joke.
Well, now, yeah, but you got up and walked, that wasn't really, like, earlier you were sit- just sitting down facing the door, no one was standing in front of you. Sergeant-at-arms, I don't feel safe.
There's a joke in front of me now, ooh.
Uh, Mister, uh, Max?
Yes, sir. Um, no, I I I have nothing to say, um, uh, no, I I I got absolutely nothing.
Alright, does anyone else, uh, wanna have the floor? It's not what convenience issue, or this, uh, this meeting. Councilmember Falco, do you have anything?
Um, I I guess I'd like to ask the public how they feel about, uh, building a new nuclear weapons facility in the city?
Oh, wait, what?
No, I I I'm opening, I I hold on, I I'm opening it up.
I I I think we should have snow cones, so so people, people enjoy the meetings. Snow cones, snow cones would be nice.
Mayor, we're gonna have to have a chat after this.
Where's the gap?
Alright, alright, alright.
Blam, blam.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, the floor.
Can I, can I open a brothel?
Can you open up a brothel?
Yeah.
AG, is there, what's the peanut, what's the peanut code against, uh, prostitution?
Oh, I think that's like thirty-five months, something else, that's a, maybe.
Uh, no, it's an infraction, it's a hundred dollar fine.
It's an infraction?
Mm-hmm. No person shall provide someone with the service of prostitution or solicit anyone in their, interacting as a prostitute. So I'd say at this time, probably not.
So, not a probably, it is against the law.
Oh, can we make that legal then?
You got thirty signatures?
You get thirty signatures, you could present the bill to the council, the next council.
She's just gonna ask him what the VU.
Probably, that probably won't be half.
Oh my gosh, only thirty?
Yep, thirty, please read the Constitution on the requirements for presenting a bill to the city council, but yes, only thirty signatures, plus some caveats.
Wow.
Well, after the thirty signatures, we still have to vote on it, right?
Yes, yes. Granted, she meets the minimum bar of signatures, and that includes, uh, I don't have the Constitution in front of me, but I believe there's stipulations on what makes those signatures a legitimate signature.
Uh-huh.
Once that bar is met, then she can bring any, any piece of legislation to the council.
Awesome.
Alright. Anyone else? Alright. Well, thank you for everyone coming out, thank you council members for being attendance. Meeting is adjourned.
Aye, aye, captain. Now to go fight some crime.
Alright, we need to present those bills.